The council is adjourned.
The agency is adjourned.
And the housing is adjourned.
What are we doing next?
Okay, we're going to do the double header next, which is the joint, say, double header. I mean, it is actually a joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency, March 8, 2011. Roll call for the council, please.
Council members, Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Najarian.
And can we have roll call for the redevelopment agency, please?
Agency members, Draymond.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Quintero.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Sheriff Friedman.
Here, and may I just say that may actually be the last redevelopment agency roll call. Oh, no, the next one, next meeting.
Depending when it goes into.
I mean, in the next, like, after this, big positive, okay. Does that help?
May I have your report, please?
Agenda for the March 8, 2011, joint public meeting of the Glendale City Council, and possibly the last Glendale Redevelopment Agency, was posted on Friday, March 4, 2011, on the bulletin board outside City Hall. One item on the agenda, first one is public hearing Director of Community Development regarding downtown art and entertainment district. At 1A is an ordinance for introduction amending downtown specific plan, ESP. At 1B is an ordinance for introduction amending downtown specific plan, DSP maps. 1C is ordinance for introduction amending Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code. D is an ordinance for introduction amending Title 5 of the Glendale Municipal Code. E is a council resolution establishing new fees associated with creative signs and special district. F is agency motion approving economic development incentives. And G is council motion approving economic development incentives.
I think there was a request to do the bond issue first. Was that what you were expressing, Mr. Lanza Fain? So, item two, please, if you'll read that.
Certainly. Item two is Director of Community Development regarding central Glendale redevelopment project area bond financing. 2A is agency resolution authorizing issuance and sale of taxable tax allocation bonds in amount not to exceed $50 million and approving related documents and actions. That B is council resolution approving issuance of taxable tax allocation bonds by the redevelopment agency in amount not to exceed $50 million and subordinating city pass-through payments to the payments of debt service.
Mr. Lanza.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and this Chair, members of the redevelopment agency, as noted in the introduction, this is authorization to issue taxable bonds. This is a follow-up from our last item, one of the strategies that we would like to implement, should we have the window to do so. These are taxable bonds, so they have the broadest range of use. They are not restricted like tax exempt bonds, so they could be used for economic development purposes in the future. The amount that we are asking seeking authority is up to $50 million. We believe that that's our absolute maximum capacity. Probably the issue amount would be something less than that. We do want to reserve some for any kind of workout that may happen in Sacramento, as well as our appeals. The critical documents before you are the preliminary official statement, which is the informational document, the fifth supplement to the indenture of trust. This is the legal agreement that governs the bonds, and it is amended over the different issues that we have come to market with. And then finally, a bond purchase contract. We're asking you to authorize the executive director to sell these bonds should we achieve certain conditions. That is, a maximum amount of $50 million. The underwriting fee cannot exceed 1%, and the interest on the bonds could not exceed the statutory limit of 12%. We don't believe that it will get to that level. Currently, we're about 8 or 8.5%. But, as noted in our last report, this is a very fluid situation, and we may be going to market at the same time with a lot of other people, so we would like that latitude. The California redevelopment law asks that the legislative body authorize this. That's why a joint meeting with the city council. And upon adoption, we would arrange to have these documents finalized. I would like to note that just last year, when we issued bonds, we did an RFP, a competitive process. We selected Suzanne Harrell and Harrell and Company as our financial consultant, Jones Hall, Chick Adams, as our bond counsel and disclosure counsel, and then Wedbush Securities as our underwriter. We would propose to use the very same team for expediency and to get this to market under the most favorable conditions. The documents are here, as well as the resolutions authorizing all this. We have all three of those entities here and staff from legal, finance, and redevelopment to answer any of your questions.
I have a question. Does anyone really think this is going to work?
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, this Chair, members of the redevelopment agency, there may be a window that opens up. If there's a 90-day period, there may be a window that opens in which we could issue the bonds. We are asking for this approval because we can't be in any worse condition. And so, if it is possible for us to do, we have the authority to do it. The other thing is, is if we were to issue the bonds and we stay alive, we would have those bonds in a superior position. If we did not issue, and there's a workout and redevelopment still exists, and we wanted to go back to market later, those bonds may be in a subordinate position to whatever the workout was, in which case, the amount of bonds that we could support would be less.
Okay, so the idea is that we go out and we sell bonds, and they are very flexible, and we're very flexible in the different areas that we can spend the bond money. And it is being, we're obligating the tax increment that we were getting from the redevelopment agency.
To repay that debt.
And then, when the state comes knocking, we say, "Too bad, we've got our bonds," and what's obligated.
Right.
That's, that's.
How fast can, I mean, the sale, the preparation of bonds for sale is a, I mean, it's not a overnight thing. It takes several months to go through, doesn't it?
We think that we could bring these to market in early April. Probably the longest time period lag following your authorization here would be to go to the rating agencies and get our bond rating, but.
Okay, let me ask this question. I understand the, I understand that we want to protect the money, but are we acting responsibly as an agency to sell these bonds as quick as we can to beat the state knocking on our door? I mean, I don't want someone to say later, "You were doing this just to hide the money, and you obligated us at a higher interest rate than the tax exempt bonds are presumably going for." You know, they're almost half, less than tax exempt, or less than half, I think, of what the non-tax exempt rates are. I don't want someone to come back on us and say, "You acted in haste." You know, we're going to say, "Yeah, but we got great advice from, you know, this person and that person, and legal, and we didn't know what was going on." I just want to make sure we are acting responsibly, with all our due diligence and the duties that we owe the public in our positions as council and agency when we do something like this. Who can cover me on that one?
I'm happy.
Let me step in for Phil here.
Dave Weaver at Havercamp Drive is going to.
The answer is, the answer is, it's a balancing act for you. We've had that very conversation ourselves. You will take a higher interest rate. You're doing this in a time and a schedule that frankly doesn't give us as much time as we'd like to put this together. If this legislation is effective immediately, if they get 2/3 vote.
Forget it.
Your vote on bonds won't make any difference because you won't be able to sell them. If you're able to sell them, if there's 90 days, then about the only way you have the highest level of protection of your local resources is through bonds. Yes, you will pay a higher interest rate. Is somebody likely to say you've been irresponsible? If their view is keeping the resources from the redevelopment agency invested locally in your community and not have it be taken by the state to go under the $28 billion black hole, then if the person thinks that you're being irresponsible by keeping your money locally, then maybe we're all being irresponsible. I think, though, that the most sure way you have to protect resources controlled by you at the local level is through bonds. It is the one, it is the one most enforceable obligation that you can have is to sell bonds. Now, there's probably a slim chance that we'll have an opportunity to. If the governor can get two or three more votes, this legislation might be effective immediately, in which case, you won't be able to sell bonds. Wouldn't be anybody who'd buy them. You wouldn't put them together. So, we'll know shortly, but if there is 90 days, it's about the only sure way you have to protect your resources.
What would the effect of the other, how many redevelopment agencies are there throughout the state?
About 425.
What would be the effect of the other 425 agencies on the bond market and the rates of return if each of them does something similar to what we're doing? Won't that cause it to spike like crazy? Because we want our bonds to be sold, and, well, we're going to have to pay a little bit more, because if we don't pay a little bit more, no one's going to buy them. And the deadline will hit, and we're out.
I've got two experts that may be able to respond to it. My guess, though, is it could go either way. You may have a flood of inventory that may reduce price. But let me ask Richard DeProspoo from Wedbush Securities to respond.
Chair, what would?
He'd be more smarter than others.
Members of the council, my name is Richard DeProspoo. I'm a managing director with Wedbush Securities in Los Angeles. Pleased to be before you today. To answer your question, Mr. Mayor, since the governor's proposal on the budget was delivered on January 10, to date, 26 different redevelopment agencies in the state of California have issued bonds, some tax exempt, some taxable. They've done this principally to capture the benefits that Mr. Starbird and Mr. Lanza Fain illustrated in terms of committing the tax increment revenues of the agencies and availing themselves with protection under the contracts clause of the state constitution and the federal constitution. The notion being that by encumbering those funds, you now benefit from the proceeds of the bond offering that you can raise, and they then become insulated from future attack by the state legislature. Interest rates have escalated, as you suggest, Mr. Mayor, because of the added supply. 26 agencies may comprise the entire market in California for an entire year, and we've seen this in the five weeks since the governor's budget has been put forward. But they are selling at competitive interest rates and interest rates that enable a transaction of this type to go forward. I should also point out that with respect to the central project area, that project area's redevelopment plan terminates in 2014. And so, the way the debt is structured, there's a provision under existing California law that allows redevelopment agencies to continue to collect increment for a 10-year period after the termination of the redevelopment plan and pledge that to the repayment of the bonds. So, a lot of the debt service for these bonds that are being proposed is being structured in the years 2015 through 2024. And absent this bond being in effect, the agency, the city, is not entitled to receive those tax increment revenues. So, it's a capturing of revenues that you wouldn't otherwise be entitled to.
Okay, so we were going to do this anyway, right? Is this a, similar to a death throws bond concept where, get it out there, create the debt, even though your legal right to operate the agency has terminated, because debt has been created, you're entitled to repay?
Under current California law.
And there's no way that this could be a burden to the city general fund? Someone going to tell us that?
Uh-huh.
That they say, "Sorry, we're taking the tax increment anyway. You're a big city. You pay off the $50 million in bonds with your general fund. You've got a big reserve, you know, you can handle it. You're big boys."
The terms of the bonds, the contracts of the bond documents that are being proposed and that will be contracted with bondholders specifically limit the obligation for the repayment of the bonds to the redevelopment agency and to the tax increment revenues that are pledged. Specifically, the legend of the bond says that these are not an obligation of the city more generally. But the broader context of your question, Mr. Mayor, it's unknown what the legislature may propose in the future and what the implications may be, but that's what the terms of the bonds in the bond offering currently say.
You know, the terms of, when my son got his dog, the terms were clear, that these are, this is the total obligation of him, and in no way or form will the parental entities have any obligation.
Did you have it in writing?
Guess who's taking care of that dog right now?
I just went through a similar experience. Chick Adams from Jones Hall is the city's bond counsel.
Let me butt in here. Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Charles Adams with the Law from Jones Hall, or Bond Counsel to the city and the agency. I want to start off by mentioning that even the proposed legislation, which your staff appropriately describes as draconian, does not purport to reach back and interrupt the ability to pay debt service on these bonds. And these bonds are enforceable obligations, are clearly defined that way, and even this legislation, as bad as it is, makes it very clear that you can continue to collect tax increment and use it to repay debt service. Beyond that, none of the bond documents obligate the city in any respect. City and the agency are legally separate and distinct agencies. The obligations of the agency are not obligations of the city, and legally, they're not enforceable against the city. So, we will, we would tell you unequivocally that this is not a debt of the city and does not obligate the city's general fund or any other assets.
Convocative.
Yes. That's been an article of face since redevelopment bonds first burst on the scene 30 years ago.
Highly respect your advice.
Thank you.
Mr. Quintero.
I have a question for the Wedbush rep. Do you have some idea of what the interest rate is going to be?
Yes, on taxable bonds, the interest rates will scale if the bonds were to be offered today. And I'm just referring to, I actually have this document I can leave with the members of the city council. These are the actual interest rates that were recorded on the 26 transactions that have sold over the last several weeks. But on a comparable issue that sold yesterday of this week, yesterday, March 7, the interest rate scaled from 3.28 in 2012 out to 8.51% in 2021. The proposed bonds for the redevelopment agency would actually term in 2024, so the interest rate would go a little bit higher, perhaps 8.5, 8.6 or 8.7 in 2024.
That's for, not for tax exempt?
These are taxable bonds.
Right, those are taxable.
Yep.
And how about tax exempt?
Tax exempt interest rates for a comfortably rated redevelopment bond, an issue was sold yesterday that ranged from 2.38 in 2012 to 6.1% in 2021.
Okay.
I hope you could leave there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one last comment, because Mr. Quintero just raised the issue. You asked about due diligence and being careful in this. We did look at a tax exempt bond, and would it be worthwhile for us to do that? We're just not sure that we have enough eligible uses for that, and it would be more beneficial for us to issue a taxable bond so that we have that full flexibility to use it for whatever purpose you choose.
Well, and today, we're just taking the first step. We're obviously going to get an opportunity to make the final decision. I mean, the numbers will be there, say, the next time we need to discuss this, right? We're going to know what the number is going to be in terms of interest rates.
What we, we could, we could come back to you. As we have done in the past, we are asking you for authority to do this under certain circumstances that are outlined in the resolution. So, were you to approve this, it would be at the city manager's discretion then, within these parameters, to sell those bonds.
So, we wouldn't have another opportunity to.
We would not come back. If you'd like us to, we certainly will.
Okay, I do have a speaker, and then we can come back and discuss it. Mr. Molano?
This is not a public hearing.
We're doing two.
Number two.
Mayor Najarian, members of the city council and redevelopment agency, my name is Herbert I believe that today, I've been listening to some very intelligent talk, and Mr. Friedman, I appreciate the comments, and Mr. Najarian as well. The, I want to put these things in perspective, especially as you are rushing towards this particular decision. In the year 2000, Glendale's bonded debt was $167 million. By 2009, it was $457. That, to me, is a problem, because those bonds have to be paid by the taxpayer eventually. So, whenever I hear that there's going to be a new bond obligation and that somehow the city's not, the city entity is not obligated, eventually the taxpayers are obligated to pay it. Someone has to pay it. So, you're now about to increase another $50 million in bonded obligations. We're going to have Measure S come to the voters for another $200 million, and we just keep kicking down the can. The inevitability here is you're trying to preserve the redevelopment agency, and you need to reassess it. You know, the reality is that with this bond sale, bond salesmen will make their commission. City employees will get to keep their jobs for a little bit longer. The redevelopment agency will continue to struggle along. Some projects will get done, but eventually, we're not really facing the problem that our reality has changed. Mr. Najarian, you asked, you know, really pointed comments that were really good. We need to reassess whether the redevelopment agency can exist as you have imagined, as you have worked with it for several years. It's just not going to be that way. Projects that are low-income housing that benefit maybe 50, 60 families, they won't come through, but it's not necessarily bad in a city of 207,000 people. It's a very small number of families that are benefiting from that significant amount of money that is going into it. You know, the benefit of Glendale is that you're pretty much well-built overall. The places where you have actually determined that it was blighted areas, like where the new hotel went up on Central and the freeway, it's not blighted, not by any normal definition. So, now, you're really struggling to look for blighted areas, where really blighted areas that really exist much in Glendale, economically perhaps. I think that you, before you rush into this, don't rush the way the city council rushed on April of 2001, when the city council back then passed the 3% at 50, without fully knowing what you were doing or what they were doing. I would be careful to put the city into further debt, or this agency into debt, where there are so many unknowns. Don't put the city into more debt. I think we had plenty. And I'm a big taxpayer here as well, at least for my level. Thank you very much.
Friedman.
Yeah, I was going to ask Mr. Starbird to explain to Mr. Molano and also the public how that debt is paid, because I think there's a lot of confusion about tax increment debt from redevelopment agencies as opposed to debt, for instance, if you can't balance your budget and you borrow money to pay it. So, Mr. Starbird, can you?
Glad, I'm glad you've asked. We, every property owner in the city of Glendale, yours truly included, because I live here and I have property here, my residence here, pay roughly a dollar per $1,000 assessed valuation in property taxes. A little bit high because there's various override rates. That dollar's going to be paid whether or not these bonds are sold or not sold. In the case of these bonds, the properties whose dollar is going to be utilized to repay them, or a portion of the dollar, are the commercial properties in the downtown area. Not my residential property, not your residential property, the commercial properties in the downtown, many of which have benefited by the investments by the redevelopment agency over the last 30 years in the downtown area. That same dollar, if these bonds aren't sold and the state extinguishes redevelopment, a portion of it will go to pay for the existing debt. The rest of it will go to the state of California and the county, one, to help the state relieve its deficit budget. They're asking for $1.7 billion in the first year, and believe me, their deficit will not be resolved in the upcoming year. So, the likelihood is, the balance of the money in subsequent years, which will now then just be converted to standard property tax revenues being distributed to the various taxing jurisdictions, I will bet you as sure as I'm sitting here, the state will dip in and take those property tax revenues as well until their deficit is resolved. It will not be resolved in the upcoming year. So, there is no greater property tax obligation on behalf of the property taxpayers. There's no longer property tax obligation on behalf of the property taxpayers. It's a matter of where this money is going to be able to be put to work and who's going to control it. It's either going to be controlled by the local city council for purposes of reinvestment in the community, in lots of different forms that all of you have talked about, or it's going to be sent to the state of California to relieve its deficit and/or distributed to the taxing jurisdictions, including Los Angeles County. Now, I, for one, as a property owner, would rather see it come to my local city council, controlled by you, invested back in the community, than to go into the $28 billion deficit the state is currently facing, and we know it will face for many years to come.
I think that's a great explanation, and just to be clear, this is debt that gets paid off by not having to send a portion of that property tax to Sacramento. It's not debt that we pay off by raising taxes, which we can't do anyway, or by taking money from other programs or anything like that. It's simply that the way that redevelopment was set up by Sacramento originally was that if we do this debt in order to try to improve our blighted areas, our redevelopment agency, our redevelopment areas, we get to keep a portion of the property tax that would normally go to Sacramento here in Glendale to pay down that debt, and the debt in turn goes to pay for all of the programs that we talked about earlier. Central Library, the Alex Theater, Central Avenue improvements, all the Americana, all of those other, all of those kinds of programs and more. So, I just want to be sure people understand that we know exactly how that money's going to be paid off. It doesn't affect the taxes that you pay. It doesn't affect the general fund of the city. It does affect the money that goes to Sacramento, and that's, that's the problem. And that's what they're trying to stop. So, it's something that you should oppose if you think that more local money should go to Sacramento, and something you should support if you think that more money should stay here. It's kind of as simple as that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Would you like a motion for the agency?
I still have a couple of questions. Wedbush rep again, if he's still not clear on the, you mentioned 3.2 to 8.5, you mentioned 2024, et cetera. Give me another idea of how this exactly is going to work. The 50,000, I mean, the 50 million will be what?
Oh, let me clarify that. I think I understand your question. Interest rates on municipal bonds are sold at varying interest rates for the varying terms at which the bonds mature. That's then calculated into a blended overall rate. So, on the taxable financing that I mentioned, where interest rates ran from 3.28 to 8.5, the blended rate might be something in the neighborhood of 7.34%. On the tax exempt financing, the blended rate from 2.38 to 6.1 might be something in the range of 5.6%. So, that would be the average or net interest cost on a tax exempt versus taxable.
So, now, Mr. Lanza Fain made a comment that you didn't want to do the tax exempt because of the nature of how that money could be spent. Is that correct?
Yes. The library project, for instance, public improvement, the street, Central Avenue, is a public improvement. Those things that don't have a private use to them or that don't have revenue that comes back, those are all public, and they're eligible for tax exempt. Many of those have been addressed with, in fact, all of them have been addressed with our last bond issue. So, that's why when we looked at it, we thought that from an economic development.
What do we have left on our last bond issue? How much money do we have left?
I want to say there's about 14, $16 million.
Left.
Left that we've committed to the library, to the pass-through, and to the soccer field at Columbus.
Okay, so now, I understand. But is it an either-or? Why do we have to do 50 in taxable? Could we do 25 in taxable and 25 in non-taxable?
Could. Again, we looked at our CIP and the projects that might be eligible for this, and we just didn't find a concentration of that in the central project area, because it's limited to the central project area.
Have we found, have we found enough projects to spend the 50 million on in terms of, I assume these are now going to be private sector projects where we're reimbursing or somehow subsidizing a development project? Is that correct?
They may be, this issue may be dedicated, if we can, to the list of projects that the agency Chair Friedman had identified, so that we can.
They're sort of in the pipeline.
That we can continue that economic development effort, yes.
But here's the, let me follow up on that. What uses could that money then be put to? I mean, I thought whenever we talked about redevelopment, we always had to have a nexus to the redevelopment zone. It was either proximate, or it was, you know, the users would be coming from there.
They would all be for pro- They would all be for programs within the central redevelopment project area.
So, for the 50 million that is taxable, what could we use, where could we put that money to use?
Again, for...
Anywhere?
Anywhere in the central redevelopment project area, which is that list, the first part of that list that Chair Friedman had read off.
Why, wouldn't it be non-taxable then?
Let me ask it another way. Phil, can you just generally describe what is the benefit and flexibility that you gain by taxable as opposed to non-taxable?
You don't have any private restrictions on it. Let me give you an example. For the Lemley project, there is a certain amount of assistance, financial assistance that the project needs. You would not be able to use tax exempt dollars to make that financial assistance, because it would be predominantly a private project. It would be used by private individuals. The hotel project that we have, that's a bad example, because there really isn't any financial participation in that. But virtually anything, you could pay your administration with taxable bonds if you wanted to have an ongoing economic development program. You could pay for marketing of the city's redevelopment project area, and to some extent, the broader city.
So, if I can cut to the chase, it's geared towards private sector activities rather than public sector?
Maybe some public sector activities that are more operational in nature than capital. Let's take the Alex Theater.
Yes.
You may be able to utilize the taxable bond proceeds to help underwrite the operations of the Alex, whereas you could do the capital with non-taxable. It's questionable whether you could use the non-taxable for the operating subsidies that we provide.
Yeah, but when we were talking about the cinema lofts, we were talking about assistance, and that was coming from redevelopment funds. Why is it because it becomes a bond?
Yes. The distinction is you could use your tax increment for that purpose, but you couldn't use your non-taxable bond issue proceeds for that purpose.
I see.
So, what we're trying to do here by using taxable is really preserve for you the same kind of latitude you have in making decisions about your use of your tax increment as opposed to bond proceeds. It gives you a greater latitude.
I mean, I don't want this going into the general fund to pay pensions.
No, 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 that is not the purpose. And it couldn't be the purpose of that. But it will give you the same kind of, closer to the same kind of latitude you have for using your general tax increment flow, but it's from bond proceeds.
Mr. Mayor, one thing, though, you wouldn't take it and just put it in the general fund. However, you could use it, if the situation was right, to repay the city loan, which would then allow the city to use that money for any purpose that the city allows, where you wouldn't be able to with a tax exempt bond.
So, it really just gives you more flexibility in the use, but decisions you need to make later on, but more flexibility in those decisions.
Okay. Want a motion now? Move 2A for the agency first.
Do a second?
Second.
Roll call for the agency.
Agency members, Drayman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Sheriff Friedman?
Yes.
2B for the council.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Okay, let's go back to 1.
Item 1 was read into the record. A public hearing.
I'll open the public hearing. Mr. Starbord? Alan Loomis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Sheriff Friedman, members of the council and the agency. Your next item for consideration is the constellation of code amendments to the downtown specific plan, Title 30 and Title 5 of the municipal code, to implement the proposed downtown art and entertainment district. This concept of an art and entertainment district in downtown was initiated by the redevelopment agency and the council approximately a year ago, and in October of last year, you directed us to make a number of specific implementation strategies, code amendments, to implement that. And if we can get the slides up, I have four slides that I think after the following conversation are relevant to review.
Weaver?
Mr. Weaver has a question.
I'll just be honest. I haven't read this. I didn't have time. With what we have tonight, another packet, I haven't had time. So, I don't feel that I can sit here and make intelligent comments and vote on something I haven't read, unless you're saying these are just cosmetic changes that I know about already.
So, the changes in downtown specific plan, I would probably characterize more in the way of cosmetic. Changes to Title 30 and Title 5, I think, warrant, are not so cosmetic.
Okay, so these are more minor.
The ordinances, however, are ordinances for introduction. That would be voted on next week.
Well, you're going to be doing a PowerPoint anyway to go over the highlights, right?
I just wanted to sort of highlight the area we're discussing. That is Maryland Avenue between Wilson and Harvard. As you can see here, essentially, this is, in the interest of most recent conversation, this is fundamentally a redevelopment and vision for Maryland Avenue in terms of how to reinvigorate new retail and new activity into it. So, that's just a slide right there, and I'll just leave it at that and say, we had not prepared a detailed presentation on all the items, anticipating that there might be questions, and that it was going to be a long meeting, saying that many of the concepts that are included in here have been discussed in past meetings.
That's one note. This looks very familiar, like we've talked about all this.
Exactly. So, if there are questions on a particular ordinance language, I can answer questions related to the downtown specific plan. Tim Foye on the Title 30 and Title 5 amendments, and questions related to economic development can be answered by an F. Artagnan.
Mr. Drayman?
My question was a housekeeping question, so I can hold that until, I don't know if we have a speaker or...
Do you have a speaker? Item Herbert Milano?
Mayor Najarian, members of the redevelopment agency, members of the city council and staff, my name is Herbert Milano. Oftentimes, when I come to make my observations, it may appear as if I have a contrary disposition towards everything you do, and believe me, it isn't. And Mr. Drayman, I really applaud you for the initiative in getting an arts and entertainment district to become to the fore with regard to what makes a thriving downtown. I commend you for that. The city has needed one for a very long time. So, the fact that we may have differences in other things doesn't mean that I have opposed to you on everything that you say, and I think that's probably one of the problems in politics sometimes, that we're put into a certain place that it seems that we have to be against you on everything. But I would like to address something. When I filed the lawsuit against the city on the downtown specific plan, it was for the purposes of trying to address the shortage of parkland and the ability for us to have a place, a community place, that would extend beyond. So, in this particular area, you are increasing, to a great degree, the level of vibrancy all the way from this area of Maryland to the library and the surrounding areas. And I walked with some of you along this area on the possibilities of really extending that vibrancy to that park area that includes some of that surface parking area in the alley right behind, adjacent to Central Park. The Dodo Recreation Center took up a significant amount of space that I oppose significantly, the space for parking. But there's a chance, if you were to look at Orange County, I think it's the South Coast Plaza, there are walkways and promenades and so forth, and you could augment that whole experience. And it is my hope, maybe not now, but soon, for you not to lose the opportunity of taking that extra two acres that we have out there and incorporate that into one whole experience to augment not just the particular commercial areas, but also the opportunities we have to create some vibrancy for entertainment along that area that is behind the property that is now adjacent to Brand Boulevard and just south of Harvard. I think that, I know Mr. Quintero walked that area with me once and agreed that that area could really serve as a significant vibrant area for the community, but we need those open spaces for the total community that we can come together to basically partake of entertainment events. We really don't have one, except at Brand Park. We need one in downtown. Thank you very much.
You? And Mr. Weaver?
Yeah, looking through, Alan. The planning commission, just looking in here, recommended adoption with the following comments. What about the following comments? That's something that you're going to work into?
Some of the comments that they raised, we did address. Some of their comments were not particularly related to zoning. They had a comment more street furniture. That's not really a zoning issue. This is strictly a zoning ordinance, so we weren't able to incorporate that in there. But they had comments about the creative sign ordinance that we were able to incorporate.
So, some would weigh in, and others would be handled in different means?
If I may also, one thing that's not covered in here that the planning commission did discuss is the relationship of the art and entertainment district to parking. At this point, this set of ordinance does not change the existing parking standards. A more holistic review of our downtown parking standards is coming back to you on March 22nd. It's not part of this ordinance, but it is coming later.
Thank you.
That housekeeping question to our city attorney. Which of the, we have A through G. Which of these can we take together? If any.
Well, the first, A through E.
Council members of the agency, the ordinances can be introduced together. Those are F and E, and G can be moved together. F is an agency motion, would need to be moved separately by the...
Mayor, when you are ready, I'd like to move those ordinances.
Another discussion I would recognize. Close the public hearing?
All right, then, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the ordinances at 1, A, B, C, D.
You? Ordnances were introduced?
You're introducing the ordinances.
That's correct. Yes. And then, Mr. Mayor, I will make a motion. I will move 1, E, and G for the council.
Second? Second? Yes, there was one. Roll call, please. Councilmember Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Najarian?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item 1F for the agency.
Second.
Roll call?
Agency member Drayman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Quintero?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Sheriff Friedman?
Yes.
You. Item 3, please.
Item 3 is Director of Community Development Regarding Urgency Ordinance, Transferring Land Use Entitlement Authority and SEQA Lead Agency Status from the Redevelopment Agency Back to the Glendale City Council. In the event the Redevelopment Agency's authority and powers are suspended or eliminated, 3A is urgency ordinance for introduction.
Did I miss the...
Didn't we just do that?
Item 3A was, I have 3A as, that was, okay.
This is a little hard to follow, because we had the special agenda come out, so things have been moved around.
But I see the item, the thread transferring...
This was, I think, number four on your original March 8 agenda.
Okay. So, it's number four?
So, this says, whatever the agency could do, council can do, basically.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Yes, essentially, it's transferring the land use entitlement and design review authorities and SEQA responsibility from the agency to the council in the event that the agency's powers are suspended or eliminated.
This is a council?
This is a council ordinance. It's introduction, for introduction, and it'll come back next week for adoption.
Now, I'll introduce the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Introduced it. And then, does that include the business for this agenda?
Yes, for this agenda.
Who will we adjourn for the council?
Second.
Council's adjourned?
Who'll adjourn for the redevelopment agency?
Second.
Redevelopment agency is adjourned.